All right, everyone. It is now 9:50, so let's reconvene. The next -- we are now going to convene a special council meeting, which we have for our utility rates. Everyone is present. The item on our agenda is items 1A through 1J are for council to take action on five resolutions declaring terms, rates, fees, and charges for each of the city utilities to be public records and introducing five ordinances to modify the utility terms, rates, fees, and charges for each of the city utilities and setting May the 21st of this year as the date of the public hearing on these ordinances. Mr. Brady, I know we've had a long morning already discussing utility rates. Is there any type of presentation to --
Mayor, council, we have -- what's before you are the same rates that you asked us. We decreased the rates, but it's the same recommendation that council gave us three weeks ago, month ago, that we -- when we reviewed these with you, when we were going through those. So this establishes and sets those rates, and it creates the date for the public hearing on these rates. But the rates have not changed from the last time council gave us direction.
Just to recap for us briefly what staff's original recommendation was and what the instructions were that you received from council the last time we talked --
You can do that.
Just for -- I think everyone on the council knows that, but just for the -- to set the context for anyone who's watching this meeting that might not have the benefit of what we all know.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Candace, could we have the utility rate increases over the last, like, four years that, you know, in part of your conversation, if that comes up, please?
Sorry, Councilmember Freeman, you're gonna make me get my glasses. Usually I try to be prepared so I don't have to look anything up, but you're gonna make me actually read something, so. Yeah, so, Mayor and council, we came to Audit and Finance and Enterprise Committee this year with staff recommendations for rate adjustments. And at that particular meeting, we reviewed, as part of that PowerPoint presentation, we did review what the recommendations were for last year pertaining to 1819 or what the projections were, not recommendations, but projections for 1819, and did show that we were having the same recommendations this year for the 1819 adjustments that we had made last year for 1819 adjustments. So they were consistent. Nothing had changed. That --
And Candace, can you summarize, was that a 3.5% rate increase?
That was correct. That was a 3 point. I'm gonna use water as the illustration, if you will, because they're all a little bit different. So water was 3.5. I think wastewater was 4%. Solid waste was 3.5, and so forth. So I'm gonna kind of use water as my example as I walk through the history of what we did. So the staff recommendation was a 3.5%. When we do the forecast period, it goes, again, it goes out till 23, 24, our forecast period. When we're doing that, we are forecasting both the growth in accounts as well as consumption, also forecasting the changes to any expenses. So for example, in 1819 fiscal year, we did have an increase of $1.2 million just in water costs alone, as well as additional chemicals that were needed. So all of that is rolled into that forecast when we're forecasting our expenses for 1819. So those are all updated. At the Audit and Finance and Enterprise Committee, again, for water purposes, the recommendation was a 3.5% increase to the residential rates, excuse me, to all rates for the 1819 fiscal year. At that meeting, we were given direction to go back and come up with some additional options at lower levels of increases, something to be lower than the 3.5. The direction was to kind of ease into that and not do the 3.5 maybe across the board. So we did come back, and through correspondence with Mayor and council, we did provide alternate scenarios, so we'll call those scenarios. And so you hear us a lot of times refer to Scenario C. Scenario C, it was the council direction when we presented to you the full council, those rates. And that Scenario C is actually located in the report, that I can tell you for those who were not watching all of these various items. Scenario C is -- I'm gonna make sure I'm getting the right one. This is 2017. I'm sorry. Scenario C was on April 5th, is when we came in and we looked at Scenario C. Scenario C has 2% increase in the water rates for 1819 fiscal year. And at that meeting, we also presented a couple other scenarios. They had different amounts for the downtown investment placeholder in those, and the council direction received at that particular study session was to go with the 2% or Scenario C going forward. We have at this time, so that's what's in front of you, is the ordinance, ordinances that pertain to 2%.
Let's mention that wastewater was 2.5%.
And 2.5, sorry, 2.5. Again, I'm using water as an example.
Right.
So they're consistent with the Scenario C. So everything is in Scenario C, and I'll tell you, Scenario C involves 2% adjustment on water, 2.5% adjustment on wastewater, 2% on solid waste residential, 2% on solid waste commercial, a $1 increase in the surcharge, the electric residential, and a $0.45 increase to the service charge on the gas residential. And those are the rates that are included in the -- I'm sorry, and $0.45 on the non-residential for gas as well. Those are the rates that are included in these particular ordinances. The ordinances before you today are introduction of the ordinances, so this is not the approval of these adjustments. It's the introduction for approval. And on the 21st, we would be coming back and holding a public hearing. At that point, then you would then take action on these particular ordinances. If passed, they would be effective on July 1st.
Thank you. Jeremy?
So this council decided to artificially keep the rates down. What effect does that have on the next five years as far as utility rates go?
The --
Does it increase them or does it decrease them?
It -- so again, over the forecast period, our goal is to get into 23, 24, a sustainable rate for the expenses that we forecasted. So bringing them from 3.5% down to 2% in 1819 then causes us to forecast the 1920 rates to, instead of being the 3.5, to be 3.85. And that's shown in Scenario C. And that comparison would be, I don't have Scenario A with me, that was a city staff original recommendation. So you can tell the difference between Scenario A and Scenario C is changing the 1819 from 3.5% down to the 2%.
Great. So my question is, if we keep pushing down rates in the current year, is your opinion that the rates have to be absorbed through increases in the next two to five years?
I would say, over the course of the forecast period, we still need to have the revenues sufficient to match the expenses. Whether we put them in the first year or the second year, at the end of the day, will be the same dollar amount.
And we should mention that even at the end of the forecast period, our expenses still exceed revenues by $4 million. So we're trying to narrow that down because those -- that difference between uses and sources is significantly growing, and what most of that pressure is coming as we've brought on these new big plants and infrastructure, the debt service on that continues to grow. And we -- and so each year, that's why it's important for us to kind of do these small increments to build up the rates so that when those large payments start coming for the water and wastewater treatment plants that are under construction today, we don't have to have these big spikes in rates. And so even with these fairly modest rates going out into the future, we still end up, even in the forecast, with, we're still $4 million out of balance. Now, we've got a -- the fund balance is able to absorb that. But again, council, we're only asking you to adopt one year. Every year, just like we did this year, we'll review it, we'll look at what we've been able to do with savings and efficiency of our plants, growth in the number of accounts, opportunities to get financial savings and debt, all kinds of efficiencies in operations. So every year, we'll come back and present to council the options about what's in front of you. Nothing's locked in, and council can make those decisions each year.
But the bond rating agencies require you to forecast out five years so that they know that you're maintaining a minimum fund balance at 8.1%. Is that correct?
That's -- that is their -- they want to see that we're maintaining some kind of reserves that are sufficient over the forecast period.
Or else they would lower our bond ratings.
They would not say, "Or we will."
But that would be one of the downside risks.
Obviously becomes a factor. You know, they're concerned about reserves, they're concerned about a variety of things. Frankly, most of the questions that we get, a lot have time to do with capacity and whether we are, are we keeping up with the capacities to serve our community, and are our plants running efficiently, and what's our opportunity to expand those to keep up with growth?
But we do have to maintain a fund balance of 8%.
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, that's the -- we try to -- that's our minimum that we try to maintain, as well as trying to improve our net loss position also.
And so on that, one of the other questions that I have, Candace, on Monday, you sent me an email and I asked you for the breakdown for paying for the ASU building, and you sent me an email and said that it costs our electric customers $466,860. It'll cost our gas customers $557,961. It'll cost our wastewater customers $1.1 million. It'll cost our water customers $3.8 million to get to the total of $6 million. Do you still believe that's correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, that is accurate, and that is within the financial schedules that are actually attached to these accounts report as part of this item.
I'm just confirming that that's still how we plan on funding ASU.
That is it. Again, those are in the schedules as a placeholder for downtown investment, and so that would be up to this council to go forward with that project or not. At this point, is included in the forecast. Is that correct?
And I think that mischaracterizes a lot of what we've already heard this morning, Mr. Whitaker. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Brady, but you said this $6 million figure --
Right. So it's not creating, but what we -- the answer is, so what did the, you know, you have $6 million enterprise fund. There are multiple business centers, water, wastewater, gas, electric, that all feed into that, and so they all contribute. And so Candace treats those business centers just like we do for the transfer, right? If you were to ask her about the transfer to the general fund, she would tell you how many millions of dollars from each one of those business centers are transferred to help pay for the general fund transfer. So in order to allocate some, a portion of those revenues from each one of those business enterprises for the $6 million, that's accurate. But at the same time, I think the question is, is it creating rate increases for those enterprises? And based on what we, when we made the decision about the size of the $6 million six months ago, it didn't have an effect on increasing the rates for those. What it meant was that those enterprises have been doing very well, and they have additional revenues above and beyond what was in the forecast period at that time, as well as result of savings costs, expenses, savings, that we were able to include the $6 million, and all those numbers that you've just heard allocated from those business centers were able to absorb those and continue their operations without having any further increases in rates. As a matter of fact, the council has actually lowered those rates.
But we've increased rates every year for the last five years, right?
To the point that that was without the $6 million. And what's driving that is expenses for operational costs. I think our operational costs have been more than 4% to 5% increases each year. That's labor, equipment, commodities are included in there. Debt service continues to grow as we invest in Mesa's infrastructure, both to expand and meet the demand in the future, as well as the replacement of the older pipes and the older parts of the community.
And part of that is towards a $6 million a year payment to ASU.
None of the -- none of the previous increases had anything to do with ASU.
Moving forward, ASU is a 20-year bond, right? That means we have to pay it back out of our budget every single year for the next 20 years? Has staff prepared the calculations of what the utility rate increases look like?
So Mayor and council, I think we've -- I'll say it one more time, and then I'll be done. Council makes a decision every year on rates. It'll make a decision every year what we suggested on the payment for the $6 million. Primarily, it'll be an excise tax bond, so by default, it would be paid for by sales tax. The council may can make a decision how much of that it wants to come from, sales tax, permitting fees, or utilities. That'll be your decision. In this first year, what we're telling you, the $6 million can be absorbed by the enterprise fund without having any impact in increasing utility rates for our consumers.
That's fair, but what about for the next 20 years? I mean, I mean, where are we getting, where do the funds come from for the next 20 years?
Thank you.
Why is it not important that we don't analyze where we get the $6 million every? This is like saying, if, why don't we push it out to 100 years, and then the payment will go down to $1 million a year, and then we only have to find $1 million? I'm just trying to understand where the money comes from for the next 20 years. Why is it that we're only worried about 1/20 of the payment?
Mayor, we gave the presentation, one of the first presentations we gave today, to show you where the benefits are coming from. So I think what we're trying to make the point is, the council will have tremendous flexibility in the future to decide where it comes from, and those numbers were 20-year numbers. And we can't bind a future council about how it wants to treat those expenses, so we do it each year. We've given you a forecast for five years, and we would expect that you could continue that for the next 20 years. But, you know, that's typically as far as we usually go, just because of the nature of the changes that happen in the economy and the cost of goods.
I guess one way to summarize the presentation would be, we're not comfortable it's gonna be a $6 million a year figure, but let's assume for the sake of argument that it is. The data that was presented this morning is that the direct income, not the secondary or the sale, you know, two or three layers out, but the direct checks that are gonna be deposited in City of Mesa coffers as a result of the, just the buildings that will be constructed, is $7.45 million a year. So if the income is $7.45 million a year, and it's to cover a $6 million a year nut, which we think is gonna be even less than that, then that's, Candace, in that scenario, does that create a stress on rate payers that's gonna result in an increase in utility rates?
Mayor, that would not create a stress on the increase or in the utility rates.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
I forgot what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Well, I do.
Okay.
I was just gonna give the utility rate increase over the last few years. Do you have that available?
So I have, so I guess I want to make sure, do you want the utility rate increases that we've had, or what it was, what was projected for 1819? Because I do have the --
You were looking at the water rate increases for the last --
For the last, so for the 18, so, because what I want to be really clear is, the question's been, how has this placeholder been affecting, how is it affecting the rates? And really, I can show you that in, on April 16th of 2015, the city council received a report on utility rates. In that particular report, the estimate for the fiscal year 1819 rate adjustment was 5% for water. So at that point, we were assuming that by the time we got to 1819, we would need a 5% increase on the water rates. The following year, on April 21st, 2016, the council, city council, received a report that listed, again, another projection for fiscal year 1819, and at that time, we were able to bring it down to a 4.5% was the projection for 1819 rates. In April 13th of 2017, city council received a report, again, projecting 1819, because each year we're doing a projection, and at that point, we were able to bring it down to 3.5% as we were doing all these, as we continued to refinancing of debt and different savings that we have. So as of last year, April 13th, 2017, the projection for 1819 was 3.5%. When we came before Audit and Finance this year, on March 22nd, 2018, that continued to 3.5%. Last year in 2017, that 3.5% did not include any placeholder for downtown investment. So there was, there was zero downtown investment in that particular forecast, and we were anticipating 3.5%. Coming forward this year, again, 3.5%, there is now a $6 million placeholder for downtown investment in the forecast for all of the fiscal years of the forecast, and the staff recommendation continued at 3.5%. And then on April 5th, 2018, city council received a report with Scenario C as part of the attachment, which was a 2% in the first year, and then going up to a 3.85 the second year, rather than a 3.5 and a 3.5. And that is what is before you today as part of the ordinances.
And I think, Councilmember, you also asked about, that's specifically kind of tracking our projections for this year, but last year, rates, all rates, the number I have was 5%. Last year, not for this, for 16, sorry.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
The 1617 increase was, sorry, last year, the adopted 1718 increase was 3.5%.
Correct.
And the 1617, the year before that, was 5%. So the 5%, the 3.5%, those are the most recent historical annual rates. So actually, the 2% that council is proposing this year is the smallest increase that we've had in at least probably the last four or five years.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, and, you know, and I'm thinking back to a couple of years ago with the previous council, when we were looking at our water rates, one of the things that we, one of the main reasons that we increased our rates was really to promote water conservation. So it, it really went after the large water users while protecting, you know, the person that uses the less, typically your retirees or fixed income folks, because we didn't want to exasperate their problems by putting a large load on them to pay their, to pay their water rates. But what I'm seeing more and more, in fact, we all, I believe, got an email yesterday from Mr. Rudolph, who's, who's saying, hey, what's going on with my water rates? You know, they're sky high, there's only my wife and I, we have zero scape, they're off the chart. And that is sort of in line with what I'm hearing throughout my community as well, is, I mean, there was, there were some folks that said, you know, we just moved here from Gilbert, and our first water, we must have a water leak, because our first water bill was almost three times what it was for the city, for the town of Gilbert. Man, if this is how it's gonna be going forward, we might consider moving back to Gilbert, which is the last thing I want to hear for, for our residents, that they can't afford to live in Mesa because our rates are too high. And so it really got me thinking, and then I think my colleague, Mr. Whitaker, had asked for the Scenario G. And then looking at Scenario G, where you went to a zero rate increase this year, and then did like a 2% pretty much every year after that, would give our rate payers relief. But my only concern is, would we still be able to pay the debt service on, on the treatment plant, the Signal Butte Treatment Plant, Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant, some of the stuff we're doing on the Brown Road Water Plant? Because if we can still pay our debt service on those, and we can allow our citizens to have at least one year of some serious relief to their pocketbook so that they can catch their breath, I would love to see the Scenario G move forward. You know, it's, it's a struggle for our citizens as we continue to increase our rates year after year. And, you know, back two years ago, I didn't, I didn't have the vision to see that we were going to be impacting our citizens in such a large way. And it's a concern that I have.
Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, the scenario that is being referred to as Scenario G was sent out to all of the council. That particular scenario is, does not include any placeholder for downtown investment in that particular scenario.
And Gilbert is increasing the rates.
And I would say, and another note coming from Gilbert, Gilbert has some substantial double-digit increases to the tune of almost 55% in one area, in a couple of their areas that they have main local. So that really, what that tells me is they were not doing incremental increases over the years.
Right. Yeah, they haven't. Chris, do you know, have you talked to Patrick and found out, what are their rates gonna be, and what are our comparable rates?
Well, we'll have to see when they make their, they haven't approved their rates, but they've, like Candace says, they've made some significant improvements. Because they're doing the same Greenfield Water, Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements, just like we are, and they see those debt service payments. They're a much younger community, so they're not as spread out as we are. So they'll probably still be a little bit lower. We'll still, you know, we'll be, it's hard too, because we have that transfer in there. That's 25% of revenues is transferred to public safety every year. So that always kind of, if you take that out, you know, we're right in the middle of the pack as far as our rates. If you just say, okay, what does it actually cost us to, you know, provide the water, deliver the water, treat the water, we're really right in the middle of the pack. But we choose to transfer over $100 million to the general fund, and that's really makes the differential between us and the other communities. Because once, we've done the study, once we take out the transfer, we're right kind of average, maybe just a little bit above average.
Thank you. Counsel.
Yeah, I think this has been covered, but, you know, for us, I at least don't want to, you know, figure out how to reduce the burden on our residents, of course. We'll do, I at least will do as much as possible to do that. But clarifying question, the, what's driving, and I think you mentioned it, Chris, driving the, the increases here, as, at least as my understanding, is growth. Mostly that a lot is happening in the Southeast Valley and Northeast Valley, right? These rates, you know, with the new plants and new residents coming in, new businesses there. Also, our aging infrastructure in districts like mine, District 2, District 1, and 4, to improve those, those, that infrastructure is driving these rate increases so that we can provide the services that our residents need on a daily basis, right? So just wanted to clarify that piece, because I think what's been purported by some of my colleagues is that we want to increase rates, which is not the case. We're trying our best to try and lessen the burden on our residents, but what's really driving these utility rates increases is, as at least I understand, growth in aging infrastructure that very few cities like Gilbert or Tempe or Chandler have to deal with, with a half a million population, a diverse set of components, variables in play in our city that really takes infrastructure costs to maintain and, and keep growing with the demands that we're encountering, so.
Right. You're correct. I mean, we, the debt service will continue to increase each year, 5 million. I think there's one year that it goes up almost by $9 million in the next couple of years. So obviously, what happens is, and that's making the payment for the infrastructure, for the Signal Butte Plant, Water Treatment Plant, which should be open soon, the Greenfield Water Wastewater Treatment. I mean, those two combined, 300 million, Jake? 250?
Yeah, we're at about 127 on Signal Butte, and we're gonna be right around 140, yeah, about the same, close to 3 with our portion of the revenue.
Mr. Brady, I don't think that's --
So $300 million between those two plants, and they're coming in together in a very short period of time. That's not my preference. I would like to stretch them out so we can have that absorption in the rates, because it's about being able to meet the demands of growth. As growth will happen, and that's what's happening, right? Growth is happening faster than we expected, it's allowing us to spread out the cost of that infrastructure. But we have to get those plants up ahead of time. It takes three to four years, five years with design, just to get those plants up and ready. So that is a big pressure point. Candace showed me the other day, just if you just took the operating costs, which is labor, chemicals, commodities, equipment.
Correct. So as part of the Audit Finance Enterprise Committee presentation, there was a slide, and it's Slide 4 of that presentation there, where we actually showed just the operating cost increases. This is excluding debt, excluding any kind of a transfers capital, that type of thing, of just the operating. And in 1617, the utilities went up 5.6%. In 1718, they went up 8.5%. And in 1819, we're forecasting them to go up 4.7%. So that's just the operating increases over the last three years, which is much greater than the rate adjustments that we've had. What that shows you is that the growth coming into the city is helping to offset some of that increased cost by spreading over those fixed costs over more customers. But the, the operating costs are going up greater than the percentage on the rate increases that we've had.
Thank you. What I've gleaned from conversations with staff this week is that a forecast is a forecast. I think, Candace, you were telling me that during the downturn, the forecast that you were presenting called for in perpetuity rate increases of 5 or 7%.
And we actually did adjust the rate 7% one year on water.
7%. So the good news is that the economy is doing very well, and when we, when we came up with this 3.5% suggestion a few years ago, that was when we were still kind of in the latter stages of coming out of the downturn. The economy has done very well. We have been trying for the last couple of years that I've been the mayor, the three or four years, to reduce our reserve balance, unsuccessfully so, because the economy is doing so well that we can't, we're not making the progress on reserving that that we'd like to, which is a good problem to have. And so hopefully, that will persist. But when that is the scenario, we don't have the pressure on the high rate increases that we projected a couple of years ago. And so, but at the same time, as for all the reasons Mr. Brady enumerated, with the water, the wastewater, all of the, the aging infrastructure, I don't know that it's prudent to freeze rates, because that, that would just sets the stage for maybe escalating the spend down of that reserve faster than is prudent.
What it sets up for, we did this one year, or we didn't do rate increases, and what happened is then that council ended up having to do 6% and 7% increases, because then those, because you have to make up for it. And listen, I think, counsel, we're gonna try to -- And listen, I think, council, we're going to try to keep these rates as low as possible. This is like conservative worst-case scenario, we'll do everything we can to keep those rates down. But, and we get to make that decision every year. So we give you a forecast, just to kind of see what's up ahead. It helps identify these big bumps when debt service is going to go up by $9 or $10 million, so we can plan for it, so we don't wait till the year before and have to raise the rates 7% or 8% just because of that increase. We do it in small increments, then we build up the capacity to make those payments when the day comes.
Also, I, I think it's worth noting that the way to take pressure off of the ratepayers, as we indicated earlier, is to, to grow the utilities within our service areas. So when we engage in economic development projects, like the project that we've been discussing all morning, when we take the, the 10-acre tract of land outside of this building, and the 20-acre tract outside of this building, and turn them into mixed-use development and residential development with, with spinning electrical meters and water meters, that increases the revenues, that reduces the, the stress on ratepayers, that allows us to pay for the police and fire in our community. That is the way, we are underutilizing, we are underperforming, particularly in some of our, in downtown, our potential for generating revenue from our utilities. And as a result, we're, I think we'll continue to be under constant stress to look at rates every year, for, in addition to the, the economic reasons that we've talked about. So, having said that, council, is someone ready to make a motion on this? Yes?
One last thing that I want to say is, despite what's said here today, this ASU building costs $120 million estimated. It's a $70 million building, the bonds will last for 20 years, it'll be at a 5% interest rate. That's $120 million that has to come from somewhere. If we don't have the money in the general fund to support our public safety, because we're raising our sales tax rate from 1.75% to 2%, it's not coming from there. The only other big place it's going to come from is our utility ratepayers. And you can make the arguments all day long that the economic forecasts show that this isn't going to happen, but historically, we've increased rates, I think, at the last 20 years at 4.7% compounded annually. The people in my district that I talk to can't afford to keep paying all these huge increases in their utility rates. And for us to make this notion that somehow you can pull $120 million out of our utilities, and that doesn't affect rates at all, is absolutely nonsense to me. So on that, I motion that none of our utility rate schedules, resolutions, and ordinances are to be used to fund ASU until our public safety is adequately funded through the sales tax increase in November.
So Mayor and council, you, so that motion is something that would bind future councils? It's, and I have to hear it again, but it would go all the way into the future? So if the intent is that for something for this year, for the adoption of a specific rate this year, council can consider it. Council doesn't get to decide for next year and for the next 20 years what council, what those councils get to do. And so the wording that I heard was a binding motion to try to bind future councils, you can't do that.
So to clarify, we can take out debt for 20 years to bind future councils to have to pay down that debt, but we can't do the opposite, just so that I'm clear.
Actually, and that's actually been litigated before, that concept, and that's, that is correct. So, and that's the, the concept of, of debt and being able to do that. But the idea that you're going to force a council in the future not to be able to, be able to adopt a rate in the future, or be able to, how it has to adopt its budget in the future, that's what, the breadth of the motion that I just heard, I'd have to have it read back to me, but it would affect all future councils on, on those topics.
I'll read it back. The problem I have with the motion is that it's, it's subjective. I mean, who is, who determines whether or not public safety is being fully funded? I would argue that public safety is being fully funded right now. The proposed rate increase is to allow for future growth. It's to hire new police and fire, and firefighters to, in anticipation of the need for, for future, that need. So that's the other problem. I, I don't know who is going to look at that motion and decide if it's okay, because we've now fully funded public safety or not.
I've, I've heard from everybody in public safety. Actually, I heard from the city council that existed prior to me in 2016, that we didn't have enough police officers and firefighters, and that our response times were going through the roof. So that's, so that's where I-
I think, I think we're just engaging in an argument at this point. There's been a motion and a second made. Council, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, is there another motion? Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Mayor, I move that we follow the resolution declaring terms rate fees changes to public records and available to the public, and introduce following ordinance to modify city-owned utility terms, rate, fees, charges, and setting May 21st, 2018, as a date of the public hearing on, on the following ordinance. A 1, a B, I'm sorry, 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1H, 1I, and 1J.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes four to three. Thank you. Then is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.